Do we know, like Tony just wrote in that he wasn't coming. JD didn't give a reason but said she wasn't going to be here. I had no idea about Benson and...
Well, you know, if we know that those two are, we don't know, let's push their buttons because that way if they don't come, it's not for everything. If they do come and we get to voting, then we'll be all set.
Yeah JD and Tony won't be here.
Okay, so we got these two over here.
Yeah, just the two over there.
Can somebody press theirs?
I'll go over there and do it.
Thank you, I appreciate that. We'll start. Mayor Natal?
Here.
Mayor Prochey Snyder?
Here.
And then you'll push Mr. Moreno's button or Mr. Benson's button? Thank you very much. I'll give you a chance to get back around to the other members who die in there. Councilwoman Teeter?
Here.
Councilwoman, or Council Johnson? I'm gonna call their names anyway. I'm gonna call their names anyway. Councilman Moreno, Councilman Benson, Councilman Carson.
She will die if you're not going to vote.
Councilman Baccal Downey?
Here.
Councilwoman Bullitt?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have.
Thank you. You guys do want to do that?
Okay, Mr. Mayor, move to go.
We need a flag's person.
Oh, I'm sorry. You all like to join us in a pledge of allegiance in a moment.
Thought that was good.
And to the quote of which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Now, I will entertain a motion to go to executive session. If you have a motion, you can get him off your agenda.
Okay, now, move that we go into executive session concerning a personnel issue regarding the annual evaluation of the city manager for students at CRS 24-6, 402, 4F.
Matt Damon?
Say it.
Move to second, we're on executive session. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, may I have a vote please? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. We'll get to executive session. We'll be back there this afternoon. Not wrong. You're not the last one. Okay, we're back for our executive session and we've already done a pledge of allegiance and a moment of prayer, so what we're gonna go into is audience introduction. Does somebody have a mic?
Ms. Spencer? Danny Tomlin?
Danny Tomlin.
Mayor Keenan? Leonard Houston? Two ideas show?
James Lott?
Carolyn Lee, City Communication?
Hi, I'm Carl Hoops and can I address the chamber for government?
Actually with citizen communication, we haven't done that yet, so as long as you sign the paper at the back of the room, you get three minutes.
Now or later?
In a minute. As soon as the audience introductions are done.
Carl Hoops. The annual city manager's office. Shelby Alford?
Mr. Corvina, I'm going to go to the ladies.
Shelby Allen, I'm excited.
She'll watch the people's list.
Greatness Director of Economic Development?
Our Information Technology.
And then you, the FPC manager?
I'm FPC manager.
Then you, the city manager's office?
Hey, thank you very much. Next item is citizen communication. Comment roster is made available on the table at the entrance of council chambers for those who wish to address council on any matter other than agenda items. When I call your name, please come forward. State your name and address for the record. You're invited to each speaker's room in three minutes. City councils are invited there not to engage in discussion or debate, but may ask clarifying questions and express concern if required. City manager will generally contact staff members to get the necessary information to solve issues. Mr. Hoops, I had a genuine interest. First person on the list is Bob Sider. Pretty even sweater.
When and at this committee is formed, how is the public going to be made aware of the times and place of the meeting?
Mr. Callen, that might be more in your area?
Well, when the task force is organized, then there will be notices posted and sent out for the citizens to know that the meetings are taking place. Now, they'll be posted out here and the city clerk will have places where she posts the notice of those meetings. I might inquire, is there a plan to provide any additional notice?
Laura?
Mr. McRum is actually serving as chairman of the town board, so I would think those questions would need to be directed to Mr. McRum. He's your council staff person, that's the reason for that.
Okay, but the notice of a meeting by members of the city council satisfies the sunshine law, that would be handed through your office?
Yes, and that's posted in the atrium and posted on our website.
Thank you. And Mr. McRum, just confirming, on the 30th, there are interviews for the people who have volunteered, but this group is only being brought together to determine if we are gonna do anything.
Right. No business will take place at any meeting other than interviews.
Okay. Who's on that panel? Mr. Wells?
JD and Renee.
Okay.
And I believe Mr. Mayor, you'll be there as well.
I'll be there. Though I'm not a member of that committee.
Isn't the council policy that anybody can come to any interview session and ask questions?
Mr. Miller, do you have something to say?
Isn't the council policy that any person on council can come to any interview session and actually participate in the interviewing of candidates? Because it isn't just a committee, it's a council that is interviewing, just like if we were interviewing for cultural council or any other commission or board, anybody on council can participate.
That is correct.
Okay, so just because there are four people on that board doesn't mean that it's only gonna be limited to us for interviewing. Anyone on council can show up.
Okay, but what I'm hoping is that your particular group will be coming back with recommendations to the rest of the council. So, Mr. Benson, did you have something?
Recommendations about what?
On what of those people who you wanted to see on this committee and what your next plan was.
Well, we'll be doing interviews, just like we always do interviews. I remember when we were first discussing this, somebody suggested that the only members of the interview committee be those on the, on our smaller committee, maybe just three or four council members. I don't care, one way or the other, I said all I. This meeting is open to everybody, council members, whatever. It don't make any difference to me, as long as we get this process started. Been a long time, maybe six years, just getting to this point, and everybody in this city, and even if you don't reside in this city, everybody in the world is invited to come to these meetings. Nobody will be turned away. Everybody can have their turn to speak, if they want that. And we'll go from there. We're gonna try to pick based on the way that we do it in all of our interviews, by asking questions and assigning a value to each question, and then somebody will add up who the numbers, and those people who have the highest numbers will be the ones to be picked. It's not, why is this so different from everything else that we do? You seem to be insinuating that it's something different. No, I wasn't insinuating anything. But I mean, but it's no, it's no different than any other... It's no different from any other interview.
Right, I don't understand what the challenge is.
I don't understand why there's so many questions about this, when the process seems to be clear. It's been clear for the last three years.
Only two people that have brought the questions have been you and Mr. Miller, and you're both on this committee, sir.
No, you brought it up, as to what was gonna be decided, what was gonna be done. I thought it was pretty clear, all we're doing is interviews to pick the people on this board, right? That's it.
That's it.
There's no more to it.
I'm sorry, the point of council policy is that we regard each other with respect, and I don't feel that a council person telling another council person to shut up or whatever I think I heard down there is appropriate, and if anyone had needs of clarification of any event we're doing, I think it's more than fair that we should be allowed to get that clarification, so I don't think there's anything wrong with asking the questions. So, sorry, Mr. Benson, I'm not calling on that comment that you made to Mr. Moreno just now, that was a clear violation of our council policies.
Mr. Mayor, we could, where the citizen communication is going, but I think this issue has been discussed sufficiently.
Next person on the list is Leonard Houston. Mr. Callen hasn't stopped at that end. I don't know if you need to talk to them or, just, I don't want it to get out of hand and I don't wanna see it start to build on that corner. Okay, well, okay, move on. That'd be great. Good to see you again. We're seeing an awful lot of you, and I think that's wonderful.
Well, I'm enjoying, sir. Good evening to everyone, Mr. Mayor, council members, and I want to wish you all a very long and good afternoon. My name is Leonard Houston, I reside at 10094 Hallow Street, up in northern Commerce City, and the reason why I'm here today is to tell you I wanna thank everyone, I got some tremendous feedback from the mayor, and also from Ridley Moore. I had a chance to create conversation with him, and what I'm talking about is a food market or a grocery store up in northern Commerce City, and I just wanted to take the time today to say thank you. I was made aware that there is a total of $59 million of revenue, which really shocked me when I heard that potential for business out there, someone encouraged everyone to get a chance to compete in the forefront, and also to a very impressive incentive that council came up to bring businesses up there, which I felt was very impressive, and me too, looking good too, so I'm just gonna let you know, be here followed up. I've been living up there for a total of five plus years, and I think it's time for my dollars and all of my constituents' dollars to stay within our community, and I'm just gonna let you know, I'm gonna do all I can, I'll be in contact again with Ridley to get myself involved in the community, but I just want to thank, ask and give you guys follow, and also to Mayor Callen, and also to Jared, thank you too.
Hey, thank you, sir. Next person on the list is Shelby Allen. Oh, did you call me all that over? Good evening.
Good evening, this is my first council meeting. I represent the car wash that just opened up on Dally Street, and I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity, and I have already seen some of you there, Renee and some others, and we're very excited. This is our first week, we just opened up, and we're already seeing some volume come through. Our neighbors have been very cooperative as far as letting us cross-market with them, so it's unbelievable. I own another facility in Milton, and just how United Commerce City is willing to help out each other business to business is pretty, is pretty unbelievable, so very grateful for the opportunity. I owe everybody a dirty cars, and I'll see you soon. Thank you.
So, it was you that brought the rain in this afternoon?
Absolutely, absolutely. Good work. Thank you.
Thank you, welcome. Mr. Snyder and then Mr. Miller.
Hi, I just wanted to thank you for coming to Commerce City for opening your business where you went back there. I've heard a lot of good feedback already from people that have been over there, so I understand it's doing very well, so thank you, and we look forward to meeting here, so thanks.
Mr. Miller?
Kelly, if you could come forward again and give the address of the car wash and everything, so the people in the audience that don't know where it is, you will know exactly where to go in order to get their car really nice and clean.
I was just gonna do a map, Renee, he's been there, so yeah, he's been there a couple times. It's 5870, I think, 7-0, Dally Street, here just next door to Chipotle and Cricket, right in front of the Walmart there, and it's got a big car wash sign, hopefully they'll leave this and that, no, it's pretty, it's pretty big, but, so the lot goes pretty deep, so it's very narrow, so it's on that front of the road, I guess, you can call it right there around Highway 2, and so I think they were talking about giving us access right after that Highway 2, I'm just kidding. But, so 5870, Dally Street, and we're open every day of the week, okay?
Thank you. Next person on the list is Carl Hoops. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this opportunity to address this body. My name is Carl Hoops, I live at 8199 Welby Road, Unit 1703, in Thornton. Now, just so that you know, I am running for the Colorado State Legislature for House District 32, and I live in the unincorporated part of the county, so I promise there will be no, no preference given to one city or the other. If I have the privilege of representing you, I will gladly represent a part of Thornton Commerce City and the unincorporated parts of Adams County. To give you a little bit of my background, I had the privilege of working for the last state legislature in my college days in Genoa, Alaska, as a staff assistant to the House Special Energy Committee, one of the most exciting things I've ever worked on. We were charged to kind of figure out how we would keep Alaska functioning if there was another war in the Middle East or an oil embargo, and I got to work very closely with a great group of legislators in committee and also on the floor. I got to see what kind of bills were entered, and what I've found out is what a vital part a legislature can play for the good or for the ill of the state. The reason I'm writing is because my wife and I are very concerned about the direction our state and nation are going. We are concerned that we're going in a direction that is economically unsustainable, and I want very much to have the privilege of representing the good people here in Adams County and helping bring them a better future. And those are not empty words. What I'm talking about is turning around our economy by reducing taxes, fees, excessive regulations, and letting businesses like this lady's business do what they do best, which is serve their customers, invest with the minimum restrictions on their hands, grow and hire good people. I've had the privilege of meeting with some of the top leadership of Commerce City, and I have to tell you that I'm very impressed with the leadership this city has, and also with your city hall. This is absolutely a beautiful facility, first class. It shows pride in this community, in your, in the local government and the leadership of this city. And I want you to know that if I have the privilege of representing you, I will answer my phone calls, I will answer my emails, and there will be monthly town hall meetings in the district. Again, my name is Carl Hoops, running for House District 32. My website is KH32.com, like Kilo Hotel.
Thank you, sir, Mr. Benson?
Mr. Hoops, who is your opponent in that question?
It is the incumbent. What's his name? Are you on for my door?
All right, I just would like, his name mentioned in somewhere.
Okay.
Now it's finished? Mr. Moreno? I'm sorry, but you were done, sir.
By the way, why don't you interject a little comment here? I had the privilege of addressing the Thornton City Council last Tuesday night, and every vote they took was unanimous. It was absolutely positive, and it seemed a thing to see how well they worked together, and hopefully we can have some of that here too, tonight.
Yes? Were you done, sir? Yes. Mr. Moreno?
Thanks, I want to thank you for coming tonight and introducing yourself. I do want to say that I think that there's a fine line that has to be watched regarding citizen communication and political campaigning, though, just for future purposes.
Sure. Mr. Benson?
Yes, and I was gonna probably say something about that too. I appreciate the fact that you've come in here, and if that council wants to come in, I think we'll let him have his three minutes too. And I think that in the future, what we did before our elections last fall, if you're in the audience, you can stand up and say, "I'm Carl Hoops, I'm running for State House, District 32," and that's all. That was what our candidates for the council were allowed to do last fall, and I would think, is that okay with the council, with any candidate for state office wants to come in and just announce that, just like we did for our city candidates? Anybody here in the channel with that?
Excuse me, if I can respond, just to let you know, Thornton City Council is very generous. They actually granted me five minutes to speak, which I didn't take, but whatever you guys, whatever the council decides they wanna do is fine with me.
Mr. Mayor? Thank you. I believe this is three minutes citizen communication. I want to make, you know, yes. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I appreciate the comments that have been made, because I was pretty lax in interrupting because I felt that it was a pleasure to have a candidate here and introducing himself to the council, but as you know, we do have a policy about public politicizing as a councilman, so I would not like to see this construed as a precedent for future citizen communications. We should be aware of that, and I just wanna reassure council that I will also be more astute about enforcing your policy in that regard, but as a courtesy to Mr. Hoops, I felt compelled to allow a certain amount of leniency in this regard since he was not familiar with your policy, and, but in the future, we will be more aware of that.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda, or I'm sorry, approval of minutes. There's two sets of minutes before council this evening for approval. First set of minutes and minutes for the meeting of August 2nd, 2010. Before voting on these minutes, I'll need a motion to allow me to abstain from voting because of my excused absence. Ms. Teeter?
Someone?
Mr. Baccal Downey? I have a motion and a second to allow me to abstain from voting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. And now I'm gonna create a motion to approve the minutes. Mr. Moreno?
Who gives the minutes of August 2nd, 2010?
Ms. Teeter?
Second motion.
Okay, is there any discussion? Seeing none, request a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Second set of minutes before council this evening are approval of minutes of meeting of August 9th. Before voting on the minutes, I need a motion to allow Councilman Moreno to abstain from voting because of his excused absence. Mr. Baccal Downey? Okay, second from Ms. Snyder. Now, I know a motion and a second to allow Councilman Moreno to abstain from voting. Request a votes, voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. And now I create a motion to approve the minutes of August 9th. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 9th, 2010.
Mr. Baccal Downey? I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of August 9th, 2010. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, request a voice vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda, there's only one item on the consent agenda this evening. Move to a motion to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve the consent agenda, present it.
Mr. Baccal Downey? I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let the city attorney please read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance amending the 2010 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado, for the recognition of the National Recreation and Parks Association grant in the amount of $4,000 to support and engage youth and families in recreational boating, fishing, aquatic education, and environmental conservation, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Okay, I've had a motion and a second. City attorney, insert the title. I request a roll call vote, please. Seven minutes passed, 7-0, thank you very much. Okay, I just had a question on procedure and it's settled. Next item on the agenda is resolution, there are five resolutions that are not included in the consent agenda because they require a separate voice vote. The first resolution is 2010-47, a resolution authorizing the submission of grant applications to go for the Fairfax Park renovation project. I'll now ask City Manager Jerry Flannery to interview staff, please come forward and open the discussion on Resolution 2010-47.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, I believe that's the end, all.
Thank you. Thank you. How are you this evening?
Good evening. This resolution is just a hearing statement asking for your permission to go ahead and submit a grant application for the Fairfax renovation project. Basically, what they will be doing is they'll go in, clean up some of the drainage issues, take one of the more, I guess, one of the worst baseball fields, make that into some open space, and then they'll have a trail that they can kind of walk around with that park. So they'll just go ahead and kind of give it just a baseline, I think. And so we just need your approval to submit that application, right?
Any questions, Mr. Council? Okay, since there's no questions, I'll undertake a motion at this time. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve Resolution 2010-47.
Mr. McAlvey? I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2010-47. Is there any discussion? Mr. Bullock?
No.
Okay, can we get your name off here, then?
Yes, I'll forward it back and move.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2010-47. Let the city attorney please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution authorizing an application for local parks and outdoor recreation grant from the State Board of Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund for improvements in Commerce City for Fairfax Park."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorney, insert the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. The next three resolutions will be heard together but voted on separately. The resolutions 2010-48, 2010-49, and 2010-50, resolutions approving business incentive for Bake Fresh Company of Colorado, North Forest Office Providers, and Bears Car Wash, which we've heard comes this evening in Detail Center. I'm now asking City Manager Jerry Flannery to interview staff to provide an update on the discussion of these resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. I would like to ask Brittany Morris second. I'm the development director of council.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council, Brittany Morris, Director of Economic Development. And it is my pleasure this evening to present to you three incentive applications for your consideration. As you'll recall, City Council passed a pretty aggressive incentive program back in May. Our first incentive application and contract was approved by you at the Commerce Rocky Mountain, and this is the second set for three businesses in Commerce City. The first is Bake Fresh. They are a wholesale manufacturer of baked goods based out of Chesapeake, Virginia. They are new company to Commerce City, and they are located at 4915 Pontiac. They are leasing an existing facility, and they have a planned capital investment of $700,000 for equipment and $600,000 for property improvements. They will create 16 new jobs, five of which will pay above the Appleton County wage, and that's above $41,000 a year, and they estimate they will employ up to 50 Commerce City residents. Next is North Forest Office Providers. North Forest Office Providers develops, constructs, and leases professional office parks. They have projects already in Westminster and Brighton, but they are new to Commerce City. They were around about a month ago at 104th and Potomac, and they are the second office complex to join the northern range. The project is a six-building professional and medical center that will encompass 54,684 square feet for a maximum of 54 individual offices. North Forest expects to complete two of their six buildings before December 1st, 2011, which is when this incentive expires. Next is Bears Car Wash and Detail Center. They are a whole-service, environmentally-friendly, premium car wash offered at portable prices. They are new to Commerce City. This company first established a car wash and detail center in Littleton. The company finished and moved into the building that was started as Mercury Car Wash on Dahlia South 6th. They are creating 70 new jobs, and 42 of them are expected to be full-time employees. Up to 70 percent of who they hire are expected to be Commerce City residents. I will go down through the total of each incentive. For Bake Fresh, the total incentive rebate will be $23,860. The total incentive rebate for North Forest Office Providers is $6,768. And the total incentive for Bears Car Wash and Detail Center is $11,500. I want to give a big thanks to Michelle Hill, who is our unofficial incentive program administrator. She is in the office, and I can answer questions, or Michelle can answer questions directly about these incentive applications. Thank you.
Okay, questions, Mr. Council? Mr. Moreno?
Not really a question, so much as a comment. I just wanted to say, you know, back when we were looking at this incentive program, we weren't sure if it was going to catch on. Obviously, it's paid off, so kudos to you and to Sam and to Mr. Flannery for getting this forward, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Mr. Council? Thank you for your job. I'll go to you and your staff.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I may, once you voted, I do have enough to wrap with the entire incentive program. It's very quick. It's just how many jobs we've created and how much investment it's actually been made, if you don't mind. It's really quick.
Mr. Flannery, can we do that before we vote, or do we need to vote first?
First, either.
Let's go on all three, sir. Okay. And they're all vote, voice, votes. So please, even though your lights are blinking, don't push them. Okay, open to a motion, Ms. Snyder. This would be a motion to approve Resolution 2010-48.
Right. Member of the council, Resolution 2010-48, council seated.
Mr. McAlvey? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let the city attorney read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution approving business incentive for Bake Fresh Company of Colorado, LLC."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorney, start the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now undertake a motion at this time to approve Resolution 2010-49. Ms. Teeter?
Yes, move to approve Resolution 2010-49.
Ms. Snyder?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2010-49. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let the city attorney read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution approving business incentive for North Forest Office Providers, LLC."
I have a motion and a second. City attorney, start the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. I'll now undertake a motion at this time to approve Resolution 2010-50. Mr. McAlvey? So, Ms. Snyder?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2010-50. Is there any discussion? Will you hear a discussion, or?
No, that was a big motion.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Let the city attorney please read the title.
Title reads, "Resolution approving business incentive for Bears Car Wash and Detail Center, LLC."
I have a motion and a second. City attorney, start the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Thank you. The last resolution is Resolution 2010-51, a resolution approving collective bargaining agreement between City of Commerce City and the Paternal Order of Police Lodge 19. Is there any discussion? Mr. Flannery?
No, no discussion now, because what was taken on this, maybe Ms. Morris can return and give her, give you that update.
Terrific. Okay, I'll undertake a motion at this time. Is there any discussion? Ms. Snyder?
Yes, Member of the council, Resolution 2010-51, council seated.
Ms. Teeter?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution 2010-51. City attorney, start the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
The title reads, "Resolution approving collective bargaining agreement between City of Commerce City and the Paternal Order of Police Lodge 19."
Okay, now the city attorney, start the title. Request a voice vote, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same. Motion passes. Ms. Morris, you know, you get on the roll, and it's just really hard to get stuff.
No, it was my fault for not saying it at the beginning, but I definitely want you to know the good news. After the approval of tonight's incentives, you have incentivized $499,025.59, and that's for a total capital investment by our businesses into our community for $15,416,640. Jobs created are 242 new jobs. I think that's incredible. I do want to quickly mention home improvement incentives. We approve those administratively, so it does not come before council through approval. However, we have rebated about $2,832 in home improvement incentives, and the average rebate check per person is $85.83. The types of projects, as you can imagine, we have incentivized are 31 reroofing and two-home improvement. And I really encourage our residents, especially those who were affected by the hailstorm, to visit www.c3ed.com to download your application. You have till December 1st, 2010, to get that in and send those for our businesses who also want to receive those incentives.
Thank you very much. I've got a couple of comments or questions for you. Ms. Mayor?
Yes, Brittany, I just wanted to say congratulations to you and Michelle and your entire economic development team. I think by now you know I'm a pretty, surely, here at your department, but you guys are really doing a great job, and the things that you guys are working on, and the things that you brought forward, just have been really great, so I just wanted to congratulate you. And just a point of clarification, you were saying that if they go to www.c3ed... Can you give me that web address just one more time? It's www.c3ed.com. That's the economic development page. You can also go to c3... What was I saying? c3ed.com. And you'll get to the same place. And there's an application there to, to apply for your home improvement incentive, and that's for the health and road, also, damage from the storm. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much.
Ms. Teeter?
Yes, then congratulations to all of you. And I just wanted to, the recipients of that, thank you, Michelle. I got a check for $52. I had a home improvement in my garage for storage. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moreno?
Again, I'll just say, in terms of unemployment and, you know, how that, how I would say that's been, the fact that we've created 242 jobs, I think it's really something to brag about. I know the program isn't over yet, so I think that the pressure is definitely going to be in order to, just talk about that.
Definitely will work on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next item, this ordinance, 1821. It's the only ordinance I've first read for tonight. It's an ordinance amending the 2010 budget by the recognition of the Bureau of Justice Assistant Grant Funds in the amount of $26,168. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to address the council on this ordinance? If not, I'll undertake a motion to introduce the ordinance, 1821, by council. Let's see, approve the ordinance on first reading. Mr. McAlvey? Move to approve the ordinance, 1821, on first reading? Ms. Teeter?
Second motion.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance, 1821. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let the city attorney please read the title.
Title reads, "An ordinance amending the 2010 budget for the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Bureau of Justice Assistant JAG Grant Funds in the amount of $26,168 to complete the final phase of purchasing furnishings and equipment for the police substation at 103rd and Walden, and authorization of the expenditure thereof."
Okay, I have a motion and a second. City attorney, start the title. Request a roll call vote, please. Okay, the ordinance, 1821, passes on first reading, seven to zero. Thank you very much. Now ask City Manager Jerry Flannery to interview staff to provide an update on the I-7 D E I S.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Council. As you know, this item has been in some form of progress for years, but basically, within the last year, it's come to a, a point of discussion with C-DOT, and they formed a committee, and we have Nene and Tom Aker, who've been city reps on that. They've had some good meetings, so I'd like to introduce Tom Aker to present the item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I'll make this brief and then leave it open for any questions. We've had two PACT meetings. The first two meetings have primarily been kind of information presentation to bring people back up to speed and kind of give them a chance to redigress some of the information that's been in the draft D I S. And particularly, it also gave members of the PACT the opportunity to say what's missing as far as data. A lot of it has been in the draft D I S, so the project team for Keystone Center and PPS and JAG, this consultant for C-DOT, actually compiled some of that information in more of a succinct form that we could review as PACT committee members. The first meeting that will actually get into what I would consider the start of the meet of the PACT is on September 9th. We'll start, at that meeting, start taking a look at each of the alternatives, review some of the information that's been provided, start giving some input on how to make each of the alternatives better, and that's from a standpoint of both the original alignment or keeping it online, as I said, but also the potential for a realignment option. And that's going to be from a PACT team as a whole, just putting ideas out on the table. And that will continue probably for several other meetings as well, and allow PACT members to identify challenges and what may be opportunities for each of the alternatives as well. In addition, Ms. Aker and myself have met just recently with Scott Jake, who's one of the committee members, Jimmy Burts, who's our business member, and Aramal Sereno. With the start of the process, we've mentioned that we would be starting to put together some ideas for more of a working briefing team within Commerce City. We just started that process as well, still trying to get some idea on the bones. So as we get that developed, we will also bring that forward to council and give you an update. The PACT meetings, for those who may be interested, are going to be held every second Thursday at Swanson Recreation Center. We wanted originally to alternate between Commerce City and Debona Side. However, Thursday seemed to be the best day that would work for the PACT members, and unfortunately, our council chambers are being held for court on this day. So we're going to be doing it at the Swanson Recreation Center, alternating between roughly an all-day meeting from 8:30 until about 4:30, and then accommodate some folks who work, doing some late afternoon meetings as well, so that we don't take time during every workday when those are happening. We will take the month of December off, and then we'll start it back after the first of the year. So with that, I will take any questions.
Mr. Benson?
Yeah, Tom, thanks for, to you and to that, for representing the interest of Commerce City in these discussions. I'm just wondering, you know, I've been to several of these meetings myself, and it just seemed like, and then talking to the people at C-DOT, that we can have these meetings and we can talk, but that eventually it's going to wind up being part of that alternative alignment. I mean, how do you feel about the, or what's your prognosis about the outcome?
I would hesitate to say one or the other at this time. I think the purpose of the PACT is to come up with a recommendation for C-DOT. C-DOT will ultimately do the E I S process and the final determination.
Well, we have, did they ever respond to that letter that we wrote in March of last year? Did they ever respond to that?
They have responded in spirit and general. However, the detailed response for all the comments will not be done, and it's not required to be done until we find with the E I S. And I believe we included, if we did not, we can get this back out. I thought we included a copy of that letter in one of our previous communications, if not, we will get you a copy of that letter.
But you're saying that in your perception, that in reality, C-DOT still has an open mind on this? Would that be your perception?
That's my perception at this time, yes.
I'm really glad you got that. I'm really glad you got that. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Bullock?
mind on this? Would that be your perception?
That's my perception at this time, yes.
I'm really glad to hear that. I'm really glad to hear that. Thanks a lot.
Mr. Bullock?
Yes, Tom, in regards to having meetings here in Commerce City, just because the council chambers are being used, they use the Recreation Center, Swanson, why couldn't we use our Recreation Center?
We can confirm, I believe they checked into that, that that was not going to work out as well, but we will confirm that as well with Keystone Center.
In regards to the number of participants at these meetings, what has been the average number of participants at these last two meetings there to be?
I'd have to count the number that have been there by looking at lists, but I can say no less than four to five of the committee members have not been there each time. It's been a different set each time. So overall, the PAC folks who were selected to be on the PAC have been attending the meetings.
So overall, are you saying maybe about 20, 30 people in total, or maybe 15?
I'm going to say it's closer to the 30 number. I can get you that exact number, I haven't counted it around the table, but we can't get you that information.
I would really be interested to see how each committee and each entity and agency is showing up at these meetings, especially for the fact that we have some communities that are to the east of us that are being able to give their opinion of what's going to happen to the I-70 realignment, which won't even affect them. So I would just like to see what their opinion rate is.
I did a quick count from the July 29 meeting, there were 22 members present and four members who were not present.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you. Is that, is Ms. DeWitt coming up also, or no? Okay. That's the whole report?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, we're trying to do this fairly regularly, because it's such a critical issue to us, and I know that there's a lot of, a lot of discussion that's going to be taken place, so we're monitoring and actively...
Appreciate it, because it changes so fast. And next item is about your presentation. I'm shaking for granted. Mr. Flannery, it's going to be Mr. Flankover?
Maybe eight percent. He likes, he likes numbers, so I'll say ninety-eight percent.
Okay, Mr. Flannery, you're on first.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Just to start it off, this is the third of the budget information meetings, and with each, each item, we'll get in more, each meeting will get into more discussion on where the issues are in the budget. I'm happy to say that most of our issues are not as intense as past years, and I've mentioned that to the council in prior discussions. Tonight, what you'll see is more detail on some of the CIP projects and the funding sources. We'll also look at what, what post-CIP projects there are, so projects to maintain what we have and following with the overarching goals and philosophy that I described last week, so the cost of doing business type projects, new projects, projects needing funding from the general fund. We'll look at proposed long-range financial plan, which was a major item that came out of the retreat of the council. There's been a lot of work that's been going on with that, and tonight we'll show you a little bit more of, a lot more of what the, what the charts look like on getting that done. We'll spend a decent amount of time on legislative budget, and I'm hoping that many of you looked at those from last week and have some confidence to look at what we want to add, and then we'll look at what you want to cover based on what we get done tonight on September 13th. With that, I will turn to go for Mr. Flannery.
Good evening, honorable mayor and council. Here are the funding sources for the capital improvement preservation plan. Adams County Open Space, which comes from Adams County, Conservation Trust, those are lottery funds which come from the state. We have a fund that is called Future Growth, and I'll describe what that is in a minute. Grants are possible funding sources, impact fee funds, as well as Adams County Transportation Tax, Solid Waste Funds, and the City General Fund. As I mentioned, Adams County Open Space is currently shared from the county. Conservation Trust, those are the lottery funds that come from the state, and then those two funding sources may only be used for parks and recreation type of projects. Funding sources, other funding sources, Future Growth, as I mentioned, that's the revenue set aside from two points of three-and-a-half percent use tax on new construction north of the A8 Avenue. And that was set aside from 2000 to 2005, and it's to be used for new public, our public improvements. We suspended that for 2006 because of the amount of debt taken on at that time. Grants, those may be federal, state, or county in origin. Impact fee funds, those come from fees paid by developers when they do new development, and the revenue is to be used, dedicated to a particular use that the specific fee is designed for. So you have drainage fees, park fees, and also road impact fees, transportation tax. We are currently using those primarily to reimburse developers for improvements that they build on behalf of the city. So instead of the city building or developing, I'm building those particular improvements, the developer may be doing it as part of their overall improvements that they're making as part of their development. There's also the Adams County Transportation Tax, and that's a portion of the Adams County Sales Tax that is shared with cities for transportation improvement projects. If you recall, that tax was extended several years back to help pay for some facility expansions and new construction for the county, and at that time, the portion that goes to cities was reduced, but we still do see proportion each year. Solid Waste Funds, that is generated by a 5% fee on solid waste disposed at the landfill. So it's a landfill took in fee. And that was established by an amortization agreement, and it's for the express purpose of mitigating the impacts of the landfill. And then, of course, it is the City General Fund. The 2011 CIP projects, we primarily, it wasn't due to a certificate pass of money for the capital projects, and that would of course be the Adams County Transportation Tax, Solid Waste Fee, Adams County Open Space, lottery funds, and some joint earnings. Some projects are recommended for funding from general fund one-time tax settlements, but that's again, for a real discretionary action. I'm going to divide these projects into two categories. One is basically the cost of doing business, maintaining what we have, and then our new projects. So the first category, the cost of doing business, first one is Valcrete Multi-Use Field Drainage. We improved that playground, and Valcrete agreed to maintain it. However, because of some design issues, drainage is a problem there, so the proposal is to use $20,000 lottery money to improve the drainage. And the reason that's necessary is so that field is not deteriorating, and we lose the field that we invested in. Tree replacement program, this replaces dead or dying trees throughout the city, and this was started a year or two ago, if I recall, and 300 trees are identified needing replacement, so 30,000 proposed to be used from lottery money. Oh, of course, equipment replacement, this is a scheduled replacement of some equipment. We're proposing to use 105,000 from lottery money. These are natural typical little pushmowers, so that's why they're expensive. Fairfax Park Maintenance Building Renovation, this replaces an old deteriorated maintenance building, proposing to use 35,000 from Adams County Open Space. Park Design Program, again, another ongoing program. This is to install new park name signs throughout the city, various park trails, open spaces, etc. Propose to use 30,000 from Adams County Open Space. General Park Improvements, these are upgrades and improvements to existing parks and trails facilities, and as outlined in the Recreation Strategy Plan, proposal is to use 50,000 from Adams County Open Space. Fairfax Park Renovation, improvements to the irrigation system from the trail, water for landscaping in the park, propose to use 225,000 from Adams County Open Space, and there's a pending grant for 1,425,000. Buffalo Run Irrigation Well Shelter Units, this would be to construct small shelters to protect the irrigation well-controlled units, because right now they're exposed to the sea. Proposal would be to use 13,000 for Future Growth, and that's the only proposed project to be funded at Future Growth. Dupont Neighborhood Improvements, Adams County is making the improvements. They're spending, well, we're spending about 1.8 million. The proposal that we agreed to for 2010 is that we would fund that to the tune of 125,000 per year, five years, and we made first payment in 2010. So this is the city's one-fifth portion of that $625,000 cost, and proposing to use Adams County Transportation Tax government. Then we have new projects, Derby Pedestrian Plaza, this is pending an agreement for a public-private partnership with Martinez to redevelop the property at 7275 Monaco into the pedestrian plaza. The property would be owned and maintained by the Martinez family, pending agreement for that as well, and the proposal is to use CBG funds, 225,000 pending county support for that. Fast Tracks Stationary Plan, this would be completion of Phase Two of the stationary plan, and the proposal is to use $100,000 from Dr. Paul. Railroad Crossing Protection, this project, the title is a little misleading, well, it's not misleading to those who know the project, but for the rest of us, it seems misleading because it's really the 96th and Highway Two intersection improvements, and it has also improved the railroad crossing. This is, the proposal is for some supplemental funding, for some safety enhancements, and the proposal is to use 450,000 from Adams County Transportation Tax and 125,000 from Solid Waste Fee. Power Road, Ward 96 Avenue, and this would be for conceptual corridor design on either Power Road from Pendleton Boulevard, 104, Ward 96, and a block lead to Power. This could include some environmental work and some right-of-way definition. Concept is to use the remaining transportation tax funds on one of these corridors based on priority, and that would be $883,000 from the Adams County Transportation Tax, both upcoming revenue from that as well as funding dollars. Here are the projects that need funding from the general fund. These are the projects that were recommended by staff after going through evaluation process. In the Technology Infrastructure Improvement Program, proposal is to put in a telephone emergency paging system in various city facilities, that costs $44,000. Cartograph Sign Inventory System, $20,250. That is a federally mandated program that we have to comply with by 2014. Azure Business Analyst Software, this would be for economic development, for their use, and that would be 13,500, have lots of data analysis by now. GIS Image Server, this is to upgrade the GIS server, $7,500. Handsome Trade Licensing for Community Development, $8,380, and Handsome Trade Licensing Permit Public Works, $28,800. Total of projects on this sheet, 132,850. There's also proposed police radio replacement, $38,000, and that would be an ongoing program for several years, in addition to some grant funds. Concrete Flatwork, $370,000, that's to replace and repair tripping hazards and that type of sidewalk, curb area. Ivy Street Rebuild, this would be the design work for reconstruction in 2012, so that's a first phase. Paper Management, one that, too, was requested, and that's to take care of backlog of deteriorating streets. The film projects, on this page, in the first page, $1,685,000. Then there's also a project that needs funding that we believe we can do somewhere else other than general fund, and that's 120th Avenue, Highway 85 to Highway 2. This may sound familiar to several of you, because this was budgeted a number of years back. And the county guilty improvements, the city agreed to reverse over two years. The county did not invoice, and the project seemed to go wrong, so not knowing what happened there, removed money to other projects. Now the county is requesting the money, and we could use either Transportation Tax, Adams County Transportation Tax, excuse me, or that settlement. And this would involve $417,000 to $79,000 per year, two years, total of $34,000. Moving on to the Long Range Financial Plan. Back when council went through the priority setting, the fiscal policies and revenues were identified as a priority. So the causal is to prepare a new long-range financial plan. The last one was prepared in 2004, adopted in 2004, and implement through 2010. Since we're in 2010, it's time to replace it, and this would also meet council's role of emphasizing fiscal policy. So here are the proposed chapters for that plan. One would deal with revenues, and then we would deal with the operating costs, our expenditures. Third one would deal with state facilities, part of the training. Fifth one would open space, parks, recreation, and trails. Sixth one would transportation, and then the final chapter, deal with fiscal policy and strategy recommendations. Proposed schedule starts in 2010. Actually, we began work in March. We did data collection, March, April, May, started the analysis, and that's to run through this month. Did some draft preparation in March and April, and we'll pick that up in this week and into September. Executive management review in this week and into September, and then writing of the chapter in October, presentation to council in November, and final chapter completion after council review in December. Operating costs, similar type of schedule to get to draft preparation. The proposal is to begin drafting that in September with executive management review in September and October, the writing of the chapter in October, November, the presentation to council in November, and chapter completion in December. City Facility, again, work was done in March, April, May. The analysis began in April, and there's been ongoing staff discussion of options which could place in October, with draft preparation October, November, and executive management review in November, December, with writing of the chapter in December, general work, presentation to council in February, and chapter completion in February. Drainage Schedule, there was some work done in March and April. There was a consultant award, or consultant contract awarded in July, and they're working on that now. And so, based on their completion, I'm scheduling the draft preparation in October, with executive management review in October, and then writing of the chapter in November, and presentation to council in December, and chapter completion in January. Open Space Parks Recreation Trail Schedule, we worked with Parks and Recreation in March, April, May, this has been all of their information, and other priorities I have to lay aside in draft preparation, but I'll schedule for December, January, with executive management review in January, and then writing of the chapter for February and March, presentation to council in April, and chapter completion in April. Transportation, as you recall, there was a transportation study that was completed. Climate Commission approved that in June. Council approved that study in August, and so... Council approved that study in August, and so I'm planning to begin the draft preparation of the chapter in February, December, with executive management review in December, January, writing of the chapter in January, February, and then presentation to council in March, and chapter completion in April. Fiscal policy and strategy recommendations, that would come at the end, so the analysis would be December, January, draft preparation December, January as well. Proposed to do a charrette discussion with staff in February with executive management review in March, writing of the chapter in April, presentation to council in May, and the chapter completion in June. So combined schedule looks like this, basically, with final completion ending in July. One of the questions that came up is public process, and what would that public process look like? Council previously discussed the citizen passport. Some options include a permanent citizen committee to advise on annual operating budget and the CIPD program, or another option is permanent citizen committee to advise on the CIPD program only. Third option would be a temporary citizen committee to advise on the long-range financial plan. And fourth option would be a series of council meetings soliciting public input on each of the chapters in the long-range financial plan. Depending on the approach taken, that public input process could add six months to its ones, or four months, and yet depending upon having the process selected and the amount of interaction that we need to occur. So that's going to be one of the questions for council, is what direction you want to go in. Turning then to the legislative budget, what was proposed is basically 504,332, and that compares to an actual 432 reasoning, but then that was amended to 493.
Mr. Mayor, Roger, just real quick, can you go back just one second? It'll save me from when I wrap up. One of the things that we look at when we do any of these types of plans is, it's a fairly good rule of thumb, there are successful methods to get plans done, a common plan, the economic development education plan, transportation plan. So if you're looking at this list, as you're thinking about it, think about those plans and how we may have approached it. Some of those committees may have longer lines than others. It's really up to the council, but I think we wanted to throw in those options, and if you remember my description last week of giving you all the options that we can, and if there are other ones that you may think of out of that, we're certainly here to listen to that and make it happen. But I wanted to just pause on that really quickly, just to kind of let that sink in a little bit. We've covered a lot of ground, I wanted to see if we could catch up on questions for the first two sections, or maybe move on, or get out. Just a few questions. No questions off the top of my head, I may ask us to go back through the CID ideas, the CIPD channel, and I think there's some other questions. We're about the long-range financial plan, and A, I'm just, it's good to get this updated. I really like seeing the layout, the structure, and how you're attacking each of those areas. At the risk of saying, thank you, and then saying, well, how can we do it sooner? How can we do it sooner? And I guess, in all sincerity, you know, we've had a challenge in two years due to the global economy. Obviously, the timing is great for us to look at a long-range financial plan, as we are a future pointer. Don't have to to the extent that it's possible while still keeping going forward. We're going to have another full-size discussion in January next year, and to the extent possible, this would be a fantastic tool for us to act with, so big that it's not a night house, that having it all the way complete is unreasonable. What I'm wondering if we could do is understand what the hurdles are to getting it done, or getting it drafted and done by that point, so that it could be a tool used by council in that discussion. And then I think we can look at how we either parallel that discussion, or we go sort of develop a parallel pathway, maybe not to the extent of building the full task force, I know we talked about that in the past. But some level of citizen engagement, whether it's sort of like what we did on the council table, we had the community meetings, fairly regular basis, where we went not least to different places in the community and facilitated little workshops almost. I feel like we need to sort of guide those paths, sort of on parallel tracks, if you will, so that they converge at some point, where we need to sit down and really firm up our names within a year, so that council has the retreat, staff has the retreat, and really have a good sense coming out of this fall budget discussion, and knowledge there is to keep people in one of them, on really what we're going with next year, what should we focus on. So, I know those are a lot of comments, and so I'll turn around here and see if that makes sense.
Well, of course, the general response would be, it's a matter of priority, and to some extent, funding. We've discussed the possibility of hiring some assistance of some sort, active range anywhere from simply advising on certain segments to then taking the lead responsibility of getting it prepared, and that's been an ongoing discussion, and we continue that discussion. In terms of council retreat in January, the revenues and operating costs would be completed by that time. The main chapters, city facilities, range, open space, all parks, recreation, and transportation, those would, you could have working drafts by that time. Fiscal policy and strategy would probably be the toughest, as, I mean, you could have some preliminary ideas, but it would be very well flushed out by that time. But, so it depends on the level of completion that you want, and then it also comes back to what level of priority will be set on this versus some of the other things that I'm on my basically, you can add. And again, those are my comments, so I certainly want to hear thoughts from council, but Mr. Mayor, I'm sure you have your thoughts.
Mr. Mayor and council members, as Mr. Hankelberg mentioned, I'd say a good amount of work would be done by the time you have it in January, especially if we slide it, I think the last one was towards the end, 26th of January or something, I seem to remember a week before the Super Bowl. But in any event, we can look at that, but also, if you're looking at a second retreat in 11, we can look at targeting, you know, part one and part two, and I do think that it's, I certainly would recommend that you look at a citizen component to run parallel, whether it be advisory, or as you mentioned, you know, little charrette-type, maybe public meetings at different entities and different groups. But I think there's room to do two, and I don't, we don't want to miss a window of four months, three, four months, but I think it might not be a bad thing to digest the lion's share of the work that's done between now and January, and then come back in, let's say, June, wherever you decide to have a second retreat. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Roger, is this the appropriate time to ask a question about one of the projects?
Certainly, I can go back, which one would you choose?
Well, with the slide on 96 Avenue and Highway 2, and you have funding done by two different entities, I think the rest would be supplemental. Right, right now, what would the total, what do you think approximately the total would be? Would that be the completion of the entire intersection that we've lobbied for in DC for the last two years?
The amount that was budgeted previously was about four and a half million, so with this, it would range to just over five million.
Okay, I know Mr. Clemens is in the audience, and several years ago, I can remember when there was no light there at all, when you put a mandate on this for, but it's worked well so far, thank you, sir.
And to council, Mr. Maria?
I'll just say, I enjoy your timeline, you resemble the impetus, but my question was, you mentioned a fund for improvements north of A, is that the same as the CIPD, or is that the CIPD?
Counselor, that is a separate fund, and it was set by council policy on, say, in 1999 or the year 2000, and simply, it wasn't done by ordinance or resolution, it just was council agreed internally to set money aside from the three and a half percent use tax and put it off of all of the construction projects. And so, of that three and a half percent, two of it was set aside for future growth, four of these public improvements. So, you know, there's, other than the budget document, which is adopted by council, there's nothing that formalizes that policy, and council agreed to spend putting money into that in 2005, which we took on by March, from under debt that year. And we continued that for through 2010, and so, again, part of the policy is to continue that in 2011 because of the downturn in economy, but at any time, council could direct staff to, again, start splitting off that two percent, so we do future growth.
Great, thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Hankelberg?
Thank you, sir.
And moving on to the council legislative budget, I'll be further to you, with the managers' office, in terms of how we handle this.
Mayor, actually, I'd like to ask Nanene, who's been mainly putting all this together, so she can kick it off and facilitate a discussion.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'd like to highlight some of the things that we did in your budget this year, so you have an understanding before you give us some feedback, and that may help you. One of the questions that I think was asked by council was on the Rotary, and we budgeted $1,000 last year for Rotary, and then we were communicating with Rotary, and finally got some resolution. There's about 150 hours of work that is to force someone to go for Rotary, and unless anybody else that wants to go, I have to pay additional. So first step to go, so sorry for the communication rush, everything get back anyway, so we can start this quarter, and go next quarter, and we have $1,000 in this budget for next year for the Rotary today. Other questions that have come up, we have, we did inside this budget increase to two retreats. We have $3,000 per retreat, and so this budget represents two council retreats for 2011. The third thing that we did is, last year's budget, we had nine council members attend in the Washington DC National League of Cities, and then we only had three council members attending the fall or the November session for National League of Cities. And we were not worried this year because it was in Denver, so we budgeted $9,000, could be put $3,000 per member to go, usually out of state. And so this year, we can accommodate the membership fee for nine people, since it's so close. With that, though, next year, I mean, this is something council has to decide, is we put seven council members on to the fall of November, National League of Cities. So that's a discussion you have to have, but it's already built into the budget as we see. One of the things is, as a community outreach, the golf tournaments have, are an opportunity for the city to participate in and give funding for the various local charities or nonprofits. And last year, we budgeted $1,000, I don't know how much it was, but what we found is, there was, in this time, is a lot of outreach requests from the city to go to golf tournaments, and there's been a need, and so we increased that budget from council to $10,000, so that's something you want to look into. We highlighted the tournaments that we anticipated, and then those that were requested, and then that's for us to fund, so we increased that funding. Originally, the request thought was that you would use some of your $1,000, and that has not worked the best, and we did that last year, and we learned from that, and so we moved that back to the golf tournament account, and that really goes to the commerce city charities. City manager Lannery had a fantastic idea, and that's just the follow-up. We would like a lot of similar participation in the local community golf tournament, and so we're following up on that to see how many people participated, kind of an equitable quota, you know, let's participate, and help everybody out. Ward meetings. Council requested you come back after the second ward meeting, and I think Council Investments is scheduled for September. With the first ward meeting by Councilwoman Marina, the bill has committed $300,000, so we can accommodate that within the budget and have four ward meetings that are included in the budget. Hispanic Chamber has come up a couple times through the course of this year, and council last year decided not to fund it, and we still had Hine here, and we funded a single membership at $250, so we're still trying to use a nonprofit membership. Call had talked to them a bit, and we had a couple options. I told them we were rid of Hank, but he was, and that's why it happened last year. You have two different membership levels that we can consider. In years before, last year, we did the $1,000 membership, and it's called the Mercury level, and that allows the city to have four members participate in the Hispanic Chamber events and go to the meetings, and that's at $1,000. There's a lower membership that we talked to them about, and it's called the Copper membership, and it's $350, and it's for two memberships, and in further inquiry, several of the cities have opted for that membership. So that's a decision that council can make. We were going to transfer the money from the communications budget, which is $250, we went to the legislative budget, add $100 to it to make that, but if you want to fully fund for the $1,000 level, that's the level that we're at in prior years, that's council prerogative, and we'll have that budget to have extended. Another thing is, we did some housekeeping. We moved, we consolidated all our costs for ICSC conference, and we moved that into the ED budget, same with the state and the city, most of the communications and get home equipments, we moved that into the communications budget, so we did some swapping of things. We moved, we had in the legislative budget is payments to pay for the music that you hear in the council building, and then also that we use for parking wreck, we moved that over to the IT budget, that's a little bit better. And then we had Employee Activity Committee that we contribute to, and as Roger pointed out last week, we moved that over to the HR budget. So I think we're just getting some housekeeping taken care of. With that, those are the highlights, and so we provided the $10,000, because you were within the reappraisal for those meetings that are specific to some of your appointments, and that is an ongoing cost now, and the same with the additional $502,000 personal account, so all those are reflected in the budget. So I don't know what questions you may have, but I want to highlight some of the changes that we did.
Senator, Council? Yes, in 2011, the NLC convention, you said you budgeted for seven council people's vote?
Correct.
Do you already know the dates of that convention?
Let me see, it's no doubt, I should know it, it's right after Thanksgiving. I think it ends up right after Thanksgiving, or right before Thanksgiving, I'm sorry, this one in 2011 would be before Thanksgiving.
Okay, because I know last year was the first of November, and this year is November into December, and when I was thinking about diverting for seven people's vote, you know, that is going to be either before or right after the election. And when I was thinking about the budgeting for seven people to go, you know, is that is going to be either before or right after the election? Whereas they may not even be sworn in because four people go, five people go off council. So that seven budget, as of last year, you know, I think that can be amended to not seven. Because depending on how that convention falls, if it fell right before the election, I would imagine that five people going off council and before the NLC, you know, that are going to go off council. And it falls between the time of the election and the time of swearing in. I don't imagine we're going to, just like last year, they said that they weren't going to send somebody that hadn't been sworn in to the NLC. So, I mean, this could be a budget amendment that can just sit and be in limbo for those seven people. Because I would only suspect maybe it very most three or four would be actually going depending on the date of the conference.
That looks, if that's a good design.
Okay.
Mr. Wilk, the date of the conference is November 8th, 2011.
That would be before the swearing in. And so there would be only fourteen of us who would go to the conference at that time on council. Okay, just last year, the safety came out, the last term, all the people who went off decided they were going. And so challenge is always what we say and what we do. Mr. Marina, do you have another comment?
Okay, thank you for the presentation, Nan. I do find it so much troubling that, you know, in Hines, where cutting other budgets are to speed growing, that has troubled me so much. And I know that there's such a scattered rule, but I don't know, I just can't help feeling a little weird about that. I think that some of it can be mitigated by doing things like the ward meeting, the final telling on having to factor $300 rather than $8,000 available in order to help the ward meeting. I think that's a kind of smart budgeting that we can do in order to kind of lessen our legislative budget. But that's something I think that's on this council's side other than staff is how we, you know, true and more necessary.
That's good. No, but thank you, $300, you should be proud of yourself. Yes, Mayor?
Yeah, just a couple of things about the NLC trips, you know, being at the November 8th, but I couldn't share about the dates for that last NLC. But especially with the number of us that are working our way up through the ranks on some of these policy committees and steering committees that two of us sit on, you know, it's my opinion, of course, it's up to council to, as a whole, to make a decision. But, you know, I'm going to want to finish serving that out because I'm moving, you know, through the ranks as we speak, you know. If I'm still on council at that time, I don't like to finish my service on that council. Also, I think from even a couple of years to now, you know, the last couple of different retreats, our legislative budget, we've made some cuts. And so I think that, you know, we have, you know, looked at some different ways that we can cut the legislative budget. So, and I do think bringing that ward meeting down to $300 would be very feasible, so that's a great move.
And then the comment, again, there may be five people sitting here, you know, there are people who are going to be a member. But if there are people who are concerning national committees, that's their last time out, that's usually the time that they are celebrated in NLC. So, you know, it's going to have to be a council decision. Is that a decision for tonight, your plan or is this a decision for the 13th, whoever that day is?
Just Mayor, that's part of the discussion tonight is what you want to have, a conversation and decisions to be made on the 13th. So no decisions on any of this. We left it as an open discussion for you to make a decision if you'd like and if you had a direction, certainly that would be fine. But you have, you have the ability to kind of go back and really dig deeper into that. And, you know, I think, I think in general, the difficult, the difficult thing about the legislative budget is just the unanticipated requests. There are requests that come in from a number of entities. Some are partners in the community, some are adjacent jurisdictions who have supported us in different things and these are different charity events. So we'll get a request that comes in and that's where the challenge comes from. So that's something that, you know, it's a lot easier if the council says, here's our list, that's it, and make it so. That's a lot easier than turning it down to just a few and then adding during the year, that's much more difficult to deal.
What would help me a lot is if I could actually see the list that says, here's all the ones we actually did take part in and here are the ones that we had requests for, so that we can look because I know for myself, North Metro is always one we do but sometimes they could drop. Well, we can look at partnerships, but if I could see a list that says, okay, you know, here's Joe's whatever foundation. Maybe it's nothing that we've ever had anything to do with. But as an example, council helps us with almost every one of our events for free, which is part of our service. So that's why we go to help them. But if I could see all of this, I'm sure that would help all the council.
I have with us, I have the center to do.
That would be terrific because it's much easier to say, well, I don't even know who these people are.
And we'll show you which ones we funded last year and which ones we moved forward that did not have the identified funding.
That'd be terrific, that'd be a big help. Any other comments from council? Um, you know, that's just comments, golf, it just, you know, it seems like when Marvel was here, it was real easy. And if Kathy was feeling better, it was really easy. Now it's a little harder getting people to go, though we have been able to fill the spots and people do recognize that we're there. Hispanic Chamber, you know, with 52% of our population south of 96, I don't know how we, you know, I just don't see anywhere you can. We're part of ACBD, we're part of Metro Denver BD, we're part of, you know, North Metro. That just seems like that's just one more that is a big hump of what our city is. Did you have a comment before you, Mr. Marina?
Thank you.
Or any other comments? I'm sorry?
I'll defer to council chair.
Okay, Mr. Marina?
Let's see, I agree, I think us taking back the golf is actually really important. And based on, you know, the CNN's suggestion that we can move it to two members and it'd be a reduced cost. I think it would be something very special to mention, I know this matter has been very active on that board before. Council decided to remove that from the budget, so I think it should be a very positive for, for, uh, for this to happen.
As would you, sir? And here's my challenge. Two very capable council people, you're going to get a very capable staff person too. Is there, is there one in between, a three-person one, would they be willing to deal with us and all? Because it really helps having staff and council there, you know, I'm just.
We can look at that, yeah, Mayor. Here's what I might recommend and this is what I was going to say, but how about we take a shot? At least with some general recommendations as staff and present that to you on the 13th. And at least that, that will provide material for discussion and then at other additions if you want to make or, or subtractions. But we'll give it a shot and present it and then you can go from there.
What may be helpful also is I went back through some of these numbers and it's, there's a couple of them that are in there that are really big dollar amounts. And I'm sure they're very effective and there's a reason that we do so many dollars there. But if I had a small explanation that said the reason that everybody else is $1,500 and this one's $30,000, why, why that's there, it would help a lot. Because I'm sure there's a reason why we give so much to one and so little to some of the others. It'd be a helpful big help. And it's here on paper, it's just not, it's not in here.
We'll take a shot at that, I can't, can't tell you right now.
No, and I didn't, I know on it now, but when you said you're going to put this together, that would be a big help. And if a number just jumps out at you and you say, okay, the reason this number is so big is because we do this. Or we get a check from that, that would be a big help. Uh, Mr. Marina?
I'm sorry?
Is there any answer to that? Any other comments from council? Okay, Mr. Marina, here's your chance to come to whatever is next.
We're coming close, I think we know, I think we know that the legislative budget will be in top of the 13th. And we'll, between, we'll, between now and then, we will put some recommendations together for the council to look at. One of the things I wanted to mention is we will be giving the council, budget doesn't have any. My manager has it on the ground, he may have seen him, he's straining his back a little bit. It's the budget book and what we want to do is give you that full detail. And maybe, maybe we can provide, depending on your preference, we want to make it available either in a book. And actually, this is a lot bigger, so maybe it's the cheap size version, okay? But we can do it in a data stick if you'd like it that way. You know, I mean, let us know, so we'll get that, we'll get that. Can you even do that? I should ask first, okay. Just because there's so many different various documents, I just wanted to make sure. So we could do that and probably do that before we plan on, before the official number as well. Is it probably at least a week, right? At least a week.
Okay.
And hopefully sooner, I'll push for sooner.
For some of us who are not as technique, we have a technique, what's the word I want?
Technical.
Technology. Technology there. Is there a hard copy that they can come see you to borrow for a short time?
The plan is to present hard copies to everyone.
Oh, that's no, you heard. No, 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 no. I, you know, I wheel that green chug out every second week and the last thing I want to do is kill another tree. So if there was one that somebody could just go down and see or if they want to request one, I think that would be okay.
Well, that's, and that's what I, what I was trying to, I.
A choice, I'm sorry.
Choice, no, no, that's, it's up to you, if you want a hard copy, we're there with you. If you want a data stick, then, then you can delete that data stick when you're done or whatever you want to do. If there's other way you want it, let us know, we can put one down.
Got to be bold out screens for our computers, uh, information to prepare.
So maybe, maybe on top of the legislative budget, are there other items specifically that council is, is thinking that we should bring forward on the 13th for the retreat? We have from three to nine locked down. So if there are other items specifically that you want to have us read back, we can do that.
Wonderful, and that's our whole agenda, correct? There's no other beating that?
No.
Okay, I have, I've got something lit up here, so I'm going to go to those. Mr. Marina?
Oh, it sounds like, it sounds like we might have a couple of minor items. Well, there's, we want to, I sent the council email on a drowning that almost occurred. I was not in a reunion and we want to recognize those teenagers.
That administrative business rather than what you own here?
That's, that's for this agenda. Probably, probably ask them to come this year.
Gotcha, okay. Um, you start, Mr. Marina?
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. I also wish the legislative budget, I'd like to see maybe a little more detailed discussion on CLDP projects and maybe some, hear from some of the department heads on which are priorities, which can we.
Sure.
Yeah, my question just kind of came back to the budget retreat. So is it going to be an initial council meeting as far as coming here to nothing or is it just going to be budget? I was a little confused about that.
Well, I don't know, do we have, I guess.
It's typically with the budget retreat, you just do budget all day and that's it, it's kind of jeans and that sort of thing. So that's how it's going to be, okay.
Mr. Marina?
I'm trying to remember from, I did last week or week before on discussion on the retreat itself. And I agree with Mr. Marina that the, do a little bit more detail on the CIP. Obviously, no limitations that we face, it was kind of the extent of those things that are out there and unfundable. Again, he's kind of like the vigorous again. Revenue enhancement, you know, that's one that sticks in my head from my first budget retreat. Mr. Kinkler, we have, we have just the unfunded mandates out there and, you know, in light of potential outcome of November, there are things that we need to be thinking about, taking action on prior to that point. That we could explore from our revenue management that would help us with some of those, those other mandates in particular. I don't know if you had those, I can't remember what you had, I mean, for revenue.
Well, we have a list from last year and the previous year. However, we've been discussing, we as staff have been discussing taking up the revenue enhancements as part of the long-range national plan of the budget process. But we're, you know, to your direction, your meetings.
Well, I appreciate that, but I think also if you feel like looking at it in the context of a long-range mandate, that may make more sense if there are, not likely to be near-term actions that we can take as a result of those suggestions, then I'm hoping to see that held out and focused on as part of the.
I think what we can do is, is present them to council in the retreat and maybe have a brief presentation on what they are just to give a general orientation of where the, what, what those enhancements were. And again, I mean, I think, I think really, sometimes it depends on the ballot box, on what process you want to follow. Sometimes they're administrative. And so we would need to look at the different mechanisms and we can, we can identify what those mechanisms are to, to make, to implement some of those enhancements. And at least have you informed on what they are and then give the direction of where you want to go with them.
I definitely just listen to that and the cost of not taking action on those, what the cost, I think, seems to be for us. I think over the, I mean, certain steps, so I'm pretty well thinking of it. So it's never a great time, but it's, I think that would be all, all facets. So council's on the left, so we do some level of that discussion.
Mr. Wilk? I hate to be one that is going to kill a tree, but I would love to have my hard copy because it's easier to highlight that than give my screen all highlighted. So, okay, thank you.
Me and Ray, go ahead.
And Mr. Marina?
I also just for informative purposes, I'd like to see maybe a report on existing cost sharing agreements with different entities that we have in, or in our list, just to see, and maybe a little bit of history on those.
Mr. Benson? Yes, I'd also like your request for a hard copy, I should go right now. Just so it's done, you made sure you checked with all the council so that, because I mean, we have two people out. Just as people want it, myself, these, I'll kill a tree. I'll be glad to have a copy. Okay.
Mr. Marina?
I have it on the computer, so.
Okay.
Yeah, you guys can talk.
Mr. Marina?
Just want to make sure that we wrap this up.
That's, that's where we're at, sir. If anybody else lit up here.
So in conclusion, just comparing the annual budget involves a number of choices as, as we've discussed. Choice of what we fund reveals what our priorities are. And I think bringing, bringing some of the CIPs back and having a deeper discussion on those will kind of set that tone. Snap has proposed those CIP projects to maintain the existing improvements and new projects to support council's priorities as described, not just in January for primaries. The long range financial plan is scheduling destruction to be council's priority, and we'll politicize that a little bit in respect to the future retreats that we look at in 11. The city continues to maintain the high level of services. I think that is first and foremost to the citizens, and we really do look at doing things more efficiently. Last year, we had a number of innovative ideas. I think after three years of innovation and three years of attention developed, I think we are at a point of looking at some minor expansion on certain, certain types of things and services within the city. That's why you see some of the staff positions. But again, those are couched in the fact that we are, we're looking at how the favelas come out of November, as well as looking at the first quarter or so of 11, before we bring out another of those employees, so we have a more thorough evaluation of how we bring them on, which is a savings as well. We look at maintaining the city's ability to weather recession. These are all redundant from last week, but they bear me, we take care of what we have, provide for the employees, we propose a balanced budget to council, position the city to take advantage of any opportunities. And I think, as you see in some of the one-time settlements that we received, you can see that we have certainly taken advantage of those opportunities, which puts us in a stronger position. SNAP continues to refine the 2011 budget for your September 13 meeting. We recommend, recommend the CIP projects selected to continue to maintain those services, take care of what we have, position the city to take advantage of opportunities, while proposing the same balanced budget. Our next meeting, as we've discussed, is on September 14th, and we plan on six hours. We'll structure a recognition within that, so we'll have a time set for that recognition. Just as a reminder, we've been on, and we may not take that entire time if we run through those. I would only add that maybe we, and I'll talk with staff, but I think we do need to have a discussion on the one-time money on the 13th, so I would respectfully request that we add that to the discussion, where there is a strategic, we may remember last week, I proposed on paying up a bond prior to November, so we want to do that, and I want to make sure that we're modeling the same page.
Question, and it's probably been answered already. Will we be balancing that daily or something? Okay, that's fine, just so that we don't, it's our jibby there. All right.
Anything else, Mr. Flannery? That's it.
Okay. Next item is administrative council business, and again, this is not a request for service, those can be handled by either S3C or another of the city manager. This is items that the city council, you're asking the city council to take some action on, or to put on for future events. Mr. Benson?
First of all, I'd like to point out that, just like our city council, all of our hosts tonight, we're units, whatever that means. Also, something that's been bothering me by citizens is at the flea market, they have a big tent up there, and they have a lot of flags flying on that tent, and the American flag is not given any preference over those flags. The American flag is supposed to be higher than any other flag, and do we have any kind of ordinance regarding that, Congress, together?
Very quickly, I believe, I believe it's state law, so...
Can we contact the people, can somebody do that, contact the people at the flea market?
You bet.
And just advise them that we'd like them to display the, we place a laser to this flag every time we have a meeting, and it deserves to have precedence over all other flags of all other countries. I'd just like to see that.
That's all I have for administrative council. Thank you, sir. Mr. Bullock?
Speaking of the flea market, I've received several complaints by individuals in that area, that they cannot, well, what they said is, since we took over the flea market, that we don't have the same number of officers out there directing traffic as they did before, and they can't get off their street on some Sunday and some Saturday mornings, that it's absolutely ridiculous on a day to happen. So I was just wondering if we could have somebody in observation, just to see if that's the truth, or if somebody's just imagination, and they're using us as a scapegoat now that we have the flea market in the city, and everything's going to be our fault now.
We'll definitely do that. If I could add, a comment to that, chief and his officers are obviously behaving like officers, and police enforcement. So there are enforcement activities going on there, and I would, I would say that there's a higher degree of consciousness to that effect, so I believe that the safety of those people are better off.
Ms. Edner?
Yes, I had a couple of complaints from some older gentlemen that have copied it in the case you go in, and I was going to stop in and talk to the owner today, I don't know if Tom or who this would be, but I guess, I would say to the health department, close it down temporarily, you have a, let's see, a rescue facility put in place, and then, I don't know exactly, because somebody checked in to have to see the status, and now the state's holding something up, and I'm somewhat confused, but I do find it annoying talking. These gentlemen have gathered there daily for decades, and it's really important to them.
Mr. McElroy?
I was actually just going to say on to Mr. Bullock's comments about traffic, and again, if he's spot on, you know, we're, we fight in our city, we're going to come our way. Do we have any traffic monitoring that was done, as where we grew traffic volumes in that area? Do we compare the traffic against the old test?
And there will be a, there will be a project, only in, from the, right road interchange with 70 there, all the way to the railroad tracks, I think, and that should be happening in the summer, so.
Mr. Moreno?
At the, the word being that I had, there were a lot of concerns raised by citizens, specific seniors, and one of the ideas that Mr. Bullock and I had talked about was perhaps having a meeting with the council and just seniors, because they are such an important part of our community, maybe instead of just a separate meeting, having a, on a future agenda, designated item, where we can just have a dialogue with seniors, and hear from them and their issues, I don't know, if that's something that the council has a problem with, or...
Mr. Flannery, if it doesn't involve staff, do you have any challenge with that?
Mr. Mayor, the only question I might have is, are you talking about putting it on an agenda?
Yeah, putting it specifically on an agenda, and publicizing it through our, through our media means, letting seniors know that that will be a time for them to come talk to council.
So what would the agenda be specifically, I mean, I'm sure that's what Boston asked me.
I imagine it being similar to citizen communication, but it being specifically for seniors and their issues.
It's only a suggestion, sir. Would it be better for council to maybe be with them on their turn, or today?
I think that's, that's a great idea, too. That's why I wanted to bring it up, some of the council's questions about what we could do. That's a great suggestion.
Thank you. I was going to raise the same, that perhaps we could go to the rec center, or somewhere where there is already a natural gathering, places of the community, and see if we can help with this, like, or mention this. Instead, we draw now, you know, get some additional turnout by coordinating something, and I don't know if we, we can keep at that with some other regularly, the birthday lunch or some of that, but we know we're going to get, we can turn out, and just try to extend, grow the audience.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Mr. Bullock, uh, you bet. Mr. Flannery, and if it's okay with council, would you have someone, whether it be you or someone else? Can we work through you, Mr. Moreno? Work through Mr. Moreno, to see if we could set something like that up? It'll have to be a posted event, because I'm sure there are going to be more than two council people at all, ten, but maybe to do it either in the senior center or someplace.
You bet.
Birthday lunch is wonderful, because they'll get 50 people there every time. But, so that we get that word out through Mary Pat, or whoever you think it should be.
You bet.
Is that okay with you, Mr. Moreno?
Great.
Any challenges with council? Okay. Anyone else on administrative, we're only, we're still administrative business. Okay, if no one else has something, I have something. We all got a copy of Ms. Neilan's upcoming China endeavors. She's put some numbers together. The challenge is, September 20th is our next meeting, where we will be actually doing business that's not determined. We're two weeks off, then we do budget, and then we're back there on the 20th. The event in China is the 20th. If we wish to send Ms. Neilan and Ms. Snyder, we probably have to get started right away, if that was council's direction. If council has no interest to make a determination now, then what I would request is that I can turn this over to metro mayors. I have four mayors who are willing to step in, and take this particular event over. Just as an aside, because I noticed that the tickets have risen since last year, which what hasn't, I would be willing to use all of my fund money that I presently have, which is most of what, of a thousand, for Ms. Snyder to be able to go, towards this trip. If council thinks that we just need to back away, I would just like to approve the council to be able to turn it over to metro mayors, and let someone else take that command of those settlements. The challenge, again, is September 20th is our next meeting, if we wait until the 20th of September, we're pretty much out of it, which is not, I mean, that's a decision, that's not, that's not a problem, it's just, you know, I think we need to do this. Mr. Bullock?
Just as a one council, I would just say we turn it over to metro mayors, and let them go with it, because, quite frankly, doing this kind of budget considerations and talk, and I would think with the Chinese delegation coming to the city in November and December, if they want to send someone for metro mayors, I think that would be a good idea, but as a city, as a capital member, I wouldn't be behind it, if anybody from the city.
And just to help with the discussion, the reason that we're going with the 20th is because it is back first, Chinese-US mayor's conference, being called Nanjing. It's not a problem, these other mayors can go there, but December will be John on total. It's always that way. Ms. Peter Benson?
I would echo Mr. Bullock's thoughts, and just say, as I said before, when Mr. Mark was here, that before I would vote to approve another trip to China, there's going to be people back to the city, I would want to hear some specifics about what we hope to accomplish for this city. And I haven't heard that yet, so I would not be for sending anybody over until I heard specifically what this trip would hope to accomplish. Okay, Ms. Flannery?
Yeah, and that, would you mind coming forward if you would, and I mean, I know you know, and you know quite a bit about this, and what, you know, the reasoning would be that we would be considering this, and when the mayor came to me and asked me if I'd be willing to go, possibly, and myself, you know, we did have some lengthy discussions about the relationship that the mayor has started over there, and how this trip would actually predicate the mayor manager of the trip that we were just talking about, when they would come out here, and so where the relationship was at when they were here before. So, I know we did have Mr. Barbara here to talk, and if you just could add on to what you think, in your opinion, would make it advantageous for us to go out there?
Well, when we went last year, we started discussions on the business opportunities, but I have to be very honest, we were exploring. It's like your first time going into a new country, and you're watching the festivals and the Asian Expo. Now to the vendor ones, it's just like ICSC, you're going to go, and you're going to be more targeted to certain types of businesses. And then this also stands and starts the first discussion on the US-China mayor's conference, and so we'll be setting the stage for that, and there was an idea that was grown out of Mayor Natale and City of Commerce City, along with the mayor, Nanjing, so you planted the seed, and it was going to continue to foster that. There were a lot of ADN companies that we started discussion with, they had, just like ICSC, they have a room set up, and you start meeting with businesses, and I'm going to ask to Nanjing government that we had an interest in it, they allowed us to visit that meeting, but we did not get to proactively set up these, and I think that would be the opportunity that we could do that also. And it's like any other marketing endeavor, you're out there, you're trying to see what can step, you're going to hit tons, and you're going to start seeing what pops up. But I think after we made our first visit, the second visit is going to be far more productive.
I appreciate that input. As I would argue, council would really consider whether or not we're going to let this relationship go, because once we lose it, and it goes to metro mayor, goes out there somewhere, you know, Denver, or whoever picks it up and runs with it from there, it's going to benefit from something that our mayor started, and we might not be the recipients of that. So it was not an easy decision for me to make, when Mayor Natale came to me to ask me if I could do it, but I put a lot of consideration into it, I still have some money in my fund as well, which I would be willing to give up the remainder of what I had, which should probably be close to enough for me to be able to go between the mayors and my fund, if I just wouldn't be able to attend the additional events, as far as extra events for the rest of the year. So, it's really up to the council, but I think that we should really think long and hard about whether or not we want to let this get away from us with the relationship that I understand, economic development, and city manager Flannery, and W city manager Beeland have suggested that we need to continue to foster.
Mr. Moreno?
I understand budget considerations, and I think that's an important factor. I don't think that, I'm not prepared to just lose this relationship though, because I think that we put someone forth into it now, and to just hang off someone else seems counterproductive. So, I mean, but, considering that, I just received this memo tonight, and haven't been able to completely look through all the details, is there any way that we can try and decide this at the budget discussion, or?
Yes, yes, the challenge is, we're running up against the table, it's from the 20th to the 24th of October, and I, and I know we've been talking about this all along, but I just, what I mean, the decision, and I don't want anybody doing it just because we're up against the board. What I'm looking for truly is for the council to say, we're not interested, so that I can give it to, I have four mayors who are willing to step in. I don't want to lose it for Denver, and I know that's not, not probably what you want to hear, because you want to hear Commerce City, Commerce City, but I can't write this one. I don't want to lose it at Denver. If the Denver metro area can pick this up and run with it, we may still get something. You know, it's, but I just, I don't want it to go to Chicago and LA and New York, I want it to come to the central part of the US, and that's all I'm trying to do, is, I know that these mayors will look at it on the job. I talked to them, they have the background, they're willing to step in, and they're I talked to them, they have the background, they're willing to step in and they're willing to jump into something they don't really know. So, it's, that it works because it then becomes regional. That's all I'm looking for at this point. I just need a direction. So, I'm not trying to push your vote. I'm trying just to get decisions of someone in this. And that's, you know, that's really my only, my only goal.
Sure.
And you've noticed, I have backed away from this entirely. Somebody needs to make a relationship. Right now, the only three people who have a relationship with Nanjing is Nanette, Ms. Snyder and myself. We can't just say, "You go." Because what happens is the first one who is the meeting, knows when you end meeting. The second meeting, you become a friend. The third meeting, you become a good friend. Fourth meeting, you're like part of it. It's just the way the Chinese hit it, bar. So, I'm not, again, I've stepped completely out of this. This is not anything I'm doing for, for me right now. I'm trying to save it for the metro area. You want to make another call, Mr. Murray, or?
Well, if the only thing that we are expressing or deciding tonight, whether we're still interested in keeping the lead on this, then I guess I am so interested.
Ms. Tureverson.
Are we voting or just giving?
Right now, we're just discussing. We're not anything.
I have, uh, Ms. Snyder and every other council person that's always requested every year that Walman's Group or whatever, I always vote a yes on that. Mr. Bullock, you're going to Philadelphia, vote a yes on that. Um, however, it's not impersonal, I will not be voting for this. Um, I think in the economic times that we have right now, that, um, I would hand it over to the Metro Mayors.
Mr. Bullock.
In one of the lines in this, um, explanation that we received today, it says, "This is in conjunction with the first US-China Mayor's Conference, which is coming here in November in the National League of Cities." And I, I, you know, as much as the, uh, you know, in a meeting past, it was communicated that, um, other mayors or other jurisdictions within metro areas have benefited from you going to China, that let them benefit because, let them mayors go because you there benefited from it. I would still say if the Metro Mayors, as Metro Mayors, uh, we, or, uh, Metro Mayors want to take this, it's still going to benefit the region. And I would say it would be my vote to let Metro Mayors go and we do all we can when they come here in November with the US-China Mayor's Conference.
Ms. Flannery.
I, uh, you know, when we talked about this the week that Mr. Barker was here, one of the things that I suggested to be did was a plan on how our relationship with China fit in with our rock and roll development strategy. And I saw that as a tool that would help folks understand why these endeavors make sense. I think Ms. Neilan put it well, and this is not unlike marketing. You never put an ad out and expect that you're going to get a specific individual to buy. You put it out to try and get someone to buy it. And part of what these efforts are aimed to do in is developing a dialogue. If you're not part of the dialogue, then oh, you are able to sort of sideline and observe the dialogue. I have not been thrilled with every aspect of how this relationship has developed because it hasn't been built on a plane and a roadmap that we can all see and buy into. But that said, um, there's also a point at which you don't walk away. You've invested, you've invested, you've invested, you've built a relationship that's established so well overboard. And so, to throw it away would have been, to throw it away at this point, it would make more sense to write a check at the onset and hand it over to Metro Mayors and say, "Hey, here's X thousand dollars from Commerce City, build all relationships with China." So, yes, I'm not thrilled at how we have been kept apprised of and felt part of or not part of the development of this relationship over time. That said, the relationship is there now and there is a report that has been established. I honestly think that the mayor should be the person that goes with Ms. Neeland as a, as an effort to continue that relationship. We heard from Neeland, this has been a learning experience at this point and now there is some level of expertise. Not unlike ICSC, you kind of have to know what you're doing to go there. And I am fearful that at this point, we would take a small step back, no offense intended to Ms. Snyder, but if the intent is to really be aggressive about establishing and growing this dialogue, then it would make more sense to me that we put two people back in the game that have played in the big game once before, uh, and this isn't time to just jump in and try and figure out a fly. That said, I still think, and I will, uh, request that this be a formal action, not delegating the staff, but a cooperative effort between the mayor and staff, to establish a plan, put a proposal in front of council that says, "Here's how this relationship should develop over time." One of the things we talked about tonight when Mr. Barker was here was this concept of transition. How do we get the mayor out of the relationship and serve a new person in the relationship? And I think that has to happen, probably not until next year. So, do I think that we've been perfect, that we as a collective and how this has developed at this point? No. Do I think we should waste, or throw away the money that we spent at this point and give this relationship away to someone else? No. So, my point is, yeah, I think we need to do this. I don't think we can give this away to Metro Mayors. But let's figure out how to be much, much smarter about how we structure and fund and develop these relationships going forward. I understand that this investment cannot be realized in the short term. This is, uh, we don't expect you to go and come home with a signed deal for somebody who's going to build something on a curriculon, that's not realistic. But you can get a relationship that dialogue that may turn into somebody a year from now, realizing there is a new place that could potentially be, that might be in Commerce City or, or near us. So, um, I am realistic about what to expect from this. I understand that if we don't participate in the discussion or engage in the dialogue, we don't have a, um, realizing any group from the, uh, investment at this point. That's it.
Ms. Tureverson.
Yes, thanks. To follow up on some things that Mr. Bullock and Mr. Flannery said, uh, I really don't think that we would be giving anything away because it's clear that these trips, I think, and I think this has been discussed here, these trips have benefited, uh, the region more than they've benefited Commerce City. And I think that, uh, we spent some money, yes, but I think that the Metro Mayors would follow up those relationships and they would do things that would benefit the region also. And that's all we've accomplished so far. And I think that because of our proximity to DIA, uh, they're going to need to come here and do some things because we are self-claimed, we can cull the fence and get into that, uh, that area, uh, the FAA and Denver agree to. We have a unique situation, uh, in this city. Also, as I remember, there was a trip, uh, where we were invited in 2008 and we decided not to send anybody over for that trip because of budgetary considerations. And I'm thinking that we're not going to, we do have budgetary considerations still at this point in time. I don't think we're going to hurt anybody's feelings or destroy your relationships by simply telling them, "We're in a real tight budget situation in this city and this is just more money than we can spend right now." And I know there's been a comparison made with ICSC, uh, what have we specifically gotten from our participation in the ICSC? I don't know, I'm sure we have gotten something, but I don't know exactly what that is.
What?
I think that could be a long answer.
Yeah, that's what I was.
But I would say that, um, the relationships that we go back on, on a yearly basis are priceless, not to sound like commercial, but I think, you know, when, when the time comes, we contact individuals and are actively doing that as we speak, um, on a daily basis. So, I mean, I think those relationships are valuable.
Well, I certainly agree with that. I'm just asking, do we have any, how, how many years have we been sending representatives to ICSC? How many years?
I'm hearing about five, five years.
Certainly, that, of course, is a long loss of money because it's in Las Vegas. But, um, I haven't seen anything specific result from that. I think it's all good to build up relationships, but it's costing as much money as this costs. I just can't see doing that. And I think that the Metro Mayors are going to do as good a job, um, at promoting this region, which is all we've been able to accomplish, I think, at this point above this region, as we could let them spend their money on it. It's not up to us to promote this region. It's up to the region to promote itself. And that means other Metro Mayors, but that's all. And I still haven't heard, Mr. McAdams has referred to the fact that we don't have a plan. I think that we've been discussing that we needed a plan for several months now. I still haven't seen one. I've heard a, um, a talk from Mr. Barker and I've said, "I want to hear if we're going again. I want to hear something specific that we hope to accomplish." And I think that there is many things, maybe it's all generalities, what we continue to build on these relationships that have been established. But, um, as Mr. Natale said, the last time we discussed this, I believe, the mayors over there, um, come in and leave, um, very rapidly. They'll be a mayor of one city, they'll move on to something else. If we establish a relationship with the mayor, where is that going to be six months or a year from now when that mayor leaves? I mean, um, we, we have terminals ourselves, I don't know whether they would call it terminal, it's over there, but I guess they're probably, uh, avoided. And they just go, um, where the national government tells them to go. But I just don't see that this is going to benefit Commerce City. And that's the only thing that I'm interested in spending our money in doing. Thank you.
All I can do is apologize. I am the mayor of a city of 48,000, is what I hear now. Dealing with a country of a billion point three, trying to set some kind of relationships to seed and root business here and to figure out a way to get our money. Am I doing an absolutely great job? No. Because this is new. I have not heard anybody in the Denver metro area or even in the state who have, has gotten to this point. And right now, all I'm trying to do is save it. And, and the perfect answer for me would be to turn it over to somebody who's willing to put the energy behind it. The last thing I want to do is split the council over this decision that whoever goes, whether it be Ms. Snyder or whoever, and if they don't come back with something, it's that I told you so. Um, I don't want to be in that place. It's not fair to the person who goes, it's not fair to the city, it's not fair to the Chinese. What I'm looking for right now is just something from the, from the council that says, "Okay, yep, we're going to send Snyder," or "No, we're going to back away right now." And I can turn it over to Metro Mayors, which is okay with the city. It's not a negative. It still works for the region. I would imagine whoever decides to go is going to probably look to Ms. Neeland and myself for information as well as Mr. Barker, um, because we have some history there, but it's not anything we can't do. So, right now, all I'm looking for is for somebody to come up and say, "Here's our decision and, and vote on it." And if, I need some money. Well, bring the motion up. What's the motion? I don't have your name on the, on the thing here. That would help. I'm not, believe it or not, I am only the figurehead here, I am not the mind reader. Mr. Bullock.
Uh, I was going to ask a question. If it was turned over to Metro Mayor, who financed the big trip?
Whatever city the mayors go, not Metro Mayors.
Okay. And, um, in a previous conversation during our budget issue, we were talking about $350 for Hispanic Chamber of Congress and $1,000 for Rotary. And we're saying, "Okay, well, maybe we can send two to the Hispanic Chambers with our three if we do a deal." And now we're talking about sending, spending $7,000, $8,000 and we aren't even blinking an eye. And it seems a little ironic to me that if we couldn't spend $1,000 to put four people on the Hispanic Chamber of Congress and go to those meetings, which benefits our city and our region here also, why, and $1,000 to Rotary, which benefits, the enormous benefit that the city, that they have contributed to the city? Where is this discussion leading that we're talking about spending close to $8,000 on a trip to China that we have a question mark in front of that may not bring anything to us in the future? You know, I mean, it's.
Not to, not to cut you off, Mr. Bullock, but that's what I'm asking. Let's not do it then. But I need the council to say, "It's okay for me to turn it over. It was strictly information." Ms. Snyder.
Yeah, first of all, I don't see where the figure of $8,000 is coming from. Um, but secondly, I think that what the mayor's really trying to say is that he's really been the one that's gone out and fostered this relationship. He took it upon himself to get on the International Committee, um, which was a result of his, um, relationship with China. He's made two trips out there, he's fostered a great relationship, we've never had a US-China Mayor's Conference before, ever. You know, Ms. Neeland and, uh, City Manager Flannery, you know, they've worked really hard to, you know, get this relationship going. So, you know, with all due respect to the mayor, I think that, you know, he's really put in a great effort here and I think that that's really what he's trying to say is, it's a lot of effort that has been put in by Commerce City. And yeah, it's not the same thing as, and we're really not talking about the same thing as the Rotary or the Hispanic Chamber. This is something that's completely separate. It's a relationship that's been developed by the mayor. So, I just think we're having to make a decision if we're just going to give this off to someone else and take it and run with it, or we keep it. I mean, regardless of who we send, it's just a matter of making a decision about whether or not we want to continue a relationship we've been investing in or not.
Ms. Tureverson, can I ask you a question, then?
Yes.
Okay. Do one of you want to make a motion to pass this to them or? I need a decision. I just need somebody to say, "Let's do this." Mr. McAdams.
I'm moving to get a relationship.
Mr. Tureverson, I'm going to assume that you're probably not going to second that. Is that correct? Okay, Ms. Snyder.
I have a motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to continue the relationship, whatever that means at this point. Mr. Gayler.
I think we should have some clarification. Continue the relationship by sending someone from Commerce City?
I'll clarify my motion. I believe we need to continue the relationship by sending Ms. Neeland and one member of council. I would suggest that it could be the mayor, as I earlier commented, if you did.
And on my second, it would also be to continue the relationship to, and to send a member of council and Ms. Neeland. Um, you know, certainly we can discuss who wants, who's going to end going or what how that's going to work, you know? This is not about me personally, this is about what we're going to do with this relationship.
So, a motion and a second. Is it a voice vote, sir? Or, I mean, will it be a general number?
Because it's probably going to be a split vote. You might want to ask for a roll call vote.
I'll ask for a roll call, but I also want to clarify a comment that I heard from the mayor and from Ms. Snyder, that, uh, according to the budget, we're going out of this strike here, but we clarified a count. Confirm a count.
No, I think I probably have about eight or a few votes left. And that's just a possibility. I didn't spend very much this year.
I would spend, I would, I would be happy to have a special, um, on the relationship.
A motion and a second. Mr. McAdams, I need you to request a roll call vote.
Yes, sir.
Please, sir. Just to answer what's asked. Now, Mr. Benson, you had a motion you wanted to make.
No, I just have a comment that this vote is now ruining our pre-merit. I'm having a bad response. Everything you have before this council denied, or whatever that means.
Mr. Flannery, it's, okay. Now, I guess the discussion is now as to where do we go from here? Is that, is that for, or later?
The motion stands on its own. I mean, I think we, um, I heard a motion that clarified that.
A motion's justified with the mayor and them. But the second did not. And that's invalid. We have, it's a motion with a question. He's making sure to second that vote.
I just said we would have a discussion about one, we were just going to send one member of council, Ms. Neil, and I just said I, we would have a discussion about who we thought should go, or what Mr. Mattel scheduled is and those kinds of things. That's what I said.
Then, the motion of one thing, so we don't have a second for that motion.
Okay.
So we need to.
We need to go back.
First, yes, we have to retract our steps here. We can get a second.
Okay, now have a motion from Mr. McElroy. And I need, and I need a second to his motion.
I would, I would second the specification here.
Okay, here's the challenge for me. The challenge for me is that a lot, my feeling is, a lot of the discussion revolved around the person. I am not as necessarily interested, but if I know Ms. Neil is going and I, and I realize that Ms. Snyder has the ability to make these relationships work, is that will make the council or come with you?
With all due respect, yes, my understanding, Ms. Snyder, please answer this question. You're not going to go back to work yet. How are you going to be going on an international junket?
Junket?
Junket, did you determine for you to get travel?
Mr. Mattel, Mayor Mayor came to me and asked me if I would be willing to go and I agreed to go. As far as my personal health situation, I would have a discussion with my physician, which is not going to be a public discussion.
I understand.
No, this is not about me at all. If we want to send Mr. Mattel, I'm asking Mr. Mattel if he wants to go because the last discussion that Mr. Mattel, Mayor Mattel and I had was that he asked me if I would go and if he wanted to, I would. That's the position I'm in. So therefore, it's not about who goes, it's who, as long as one of us goes, because we have both met with them, the mayor and I, and we met, have both met with them, we both have relationships with them. Obviously, he's been over there twice. I am perfectly fine with him going, but I'm just saying that he asked me if I would be willing to go in this place and that's the position that I'm in. So, if that makes any sense at all.
I still have a motion.
Is there a second? You have a motion or a second?
I have a motion and a second from Mr. Murray. Correct. Okay. Another roll call.
I just have a discussion.
Who's second is the motion?
And Ms. Neil. And as much as possible, we found that it was discretionary. And it was discretionary budget. I believe that initially the mayor suggested do it, I would give his, I would give mine, a portion of mine. Again, if you don't want this, we don't want it. I'm not going to sit here. Okay, I answered over.
Right, and then there are.
So, I mean.
I think somehow we're along the line to be, it's not about me, this is not about me at all. And that's what I want us to make crystal clear. I mean, the truth of the matter is, yes, I am recovering from a major injury and it wouldn't, you know, I mean, I would do it because I will do anything for the city. I think that's pretty much been proven. So if the mayor is willing to go, I am more than happy to see the mayor go. I would only respond, as I said before, to his request to me that I would go. So however you guys want to do it, it's perfectly fine with me. I'm all for Mayor, this is all going.
And again, my, my personal note is, I want this relationship to work. I am more than willing to pass it to someone else. I just need to get a decision so that we don't stand them up.
Ms. Mary, you have a motion on the floor and a second.
And a voice vote. I'm waiting for a roll call. We can withdraw the motion because we can't make a decision. This is, I mean.
Mr. Benson, would you make a motion?
All right. I want somebody to tell me who the best person for this trip is to continue the relationship, promote the relationship. My read on this is the mayor. My read on this is Ms. Neil. If I'm any correct, you can tell me.
No, you're correct.
Then my motion stands and let's.
Hey, a poll for both.
And I agree with that one hundred and ten percent. That's what I've been trying to say.
Mr. Murray, now you have a second. A roll call, both may notice that all nine of you are here. The roll call now is four to one of each. He still passes, correct. Motion passes, somebody here. On to reports.
There's a voice boarder here. As a council member, we cannot abstain.
No, it counts as a yes vote.
Okay, that counts as a yes vote. Yes, it's not an abstention. We cannot abstain from voting on items on council.
Okay, here's my only question because we've seen this in the past. Because we have the yes vote, so you're going to come back on the twenty and then vote.
You have the yes vote, passed four to three. The only way we'd come back is somebody that voted yes makes a motion to reconsider. So that would require someone that voted yes.
Okay. And you, Mr. McElroy, what is this your next, or? This is mayor, Mr. Murray. Done. Okay, now on to reports.
No report.
Mr. McElroy.
No report.
Ms. Neil.
No report.
Mr. Murray.
No report.
Mr. Benson.
Well, excuse me, we have the Monica Labor Department and Monica Labor Department. Also got a chance to attend the memorial service for one of our Canines, Caesar, who has passed away. I guess complications from injuries suffered during the life of his duty. And that was a very moving ceremony. Nice question, we have Dr. Cobb for the, uh, the issue regarding the RTB. I guess you might say, projection of three point seven percent increase in sales tax came up for an actual vote by Dr. Cobb. And it was also pointed out that several years ago, um, it was agreed by RTB that monies for pass tracks would be spent pro rap on each of the branches around the area. So they would all grow out from the central core even. As we all know, that hasn't happened. The South Carolina is having all of the money. And unless somebody is going to vote for this, um, sales tax increase, probably November two thousand and eleven, we're going to be stuck until about the year twenty forty before we get any part of the pass tracks built up here. I just think, I voted against it, uh, Dr. Cobb, because I just, I don't like the way that they're operating and I don't like the way that they break their promises. They, they, they violate, um, even written documents. And I could not vote to second that. That was my opinion. Also, on Friday, and unless you're Dr. Rod, one of the twenty-seven J, as who is your superintendent, and I would say that most of our conversation concerned the sixty-sixty-one and one-on-one. And I have, uh, invited a representative of the twenty-seven J to come speak and give the facts and what it could do to twenty-seven J. If any one or more of these, um, propositions pass, someone is going to either come itself or have somebody who is your twenty-seven J at our work and then say, turn to the second. That's all I have.
Um, yes, I attended the full memorial for K-9 Caesar and it was certainly a moving event. He was nothing. I mean, he truly was, he was one of the most decorated officers of the Commerce City Police Department and, uh, he has a purple heart. He is a, he was, he was a very amazing dog and it was a very moving ceremony. His, his two families were both here and, uh, that was something to see. I tell you, I think that we don't really realize how much these dogs dedicate their lives and that they are truly here to serve our community and serve the officers that they live with and that they take care of and that they are really, you know, they play such an important role. We had Canines from other areas come, so some other dogs attended the dog service. Um, we have Jet, Jetco here and maybe one or two others as well. And so it was a very respected and moving, um, ceremony. So I wanted to thank the chief and everyone that was involved in putting that together because I think that was a very worthy memorial for him. He was well worth it. He was an amazing dog. And now that we've had the vote, we've had all the China discussion out there, now I can feel free. It's difficult for me, after having gone through what I've been through with this injury and the recovery, which has been very difficult, and never wanted to appear that there's something that I can't do, that's difficult for me because I'm not that, I'm a verbalized, you know, get out there and do everything, even when, you know, it's not always in my best interest to do so. So the truth of the matter is, is certainly my preference to have the mayor vote to China and I'm actually indeed in a way that I don't have to go. So, but just to let everyone know, I would have gone, um, regardless, um, but now that I can speak freely about it, I just wanted everyone to know that it's actually better to leave physically at this point, not to have to. So, thank you.
I was also at the Monica Park, if you would, thank everybody that was there. It was nice. And I went to the, had a couple of breakfasts on Friday and had somebody from Metro Water Waste Water, they also were talking about, everybody's talking about sixty-seven percent. They're talking about a forty percent increase in all of these, because they have lots of property that will be found intact that they don't have to absorb, I guess, onto which was, um, which is a part of the overhead. Also went to a naturalization ceremony on Friday, made a contact for somebody who was a C. They're looking to do some kind of cooperation between Commerce City and, uh, Naturalization. This is not, I just, this is the other side. This is Homeland Security and Naturalization, so, um, which was very good, you know, being an event that's actually Friday, and now it's up to you, partner business. Um, Mr. Flannery, I don't know why I always forget to have you over.
It's okay. I just have two quick items. One, I just wanted to mention on the sixty-sixty-one and one-on-one, uh, that we will be having a number of jurisdictions coming in on September twenty-seventh, council, to give you a general view of what those impacts are. Twenty-seven J, fourteen, South Adams Water, County, all we're trying to get in one spot to, I'm sure there's going to be a lot more of these types of meetings. I think we're going to participate in probably a board meeting of education. So we're trying to get that dialogue back to court. I think we're also asking South Adams Fire, as we mentioned in our meeting with them. And then, um, secondly, I wanted to mention that Brittany Morris will be attending a conference this week, uh, from Wednesday through Sunday for site selectors. And the site selectors are, there's nine of them coming in from out of town. Um, and there's a whole, uh, number of meetings that surround this discussion and these visits. And it will be breakfast. And if you remember last year, there was a discussion of, uh, at the end of, well, not the end, but, but on a Friday morning, they come in and say, here's what we're looking for when we select, um, an area. We duplicated that in this chambers, uh, probably, I think, in, in March or so, uh, with a number of local businesses who gave us the same feedback of what they look for in communities. So, uh, there are a couple of seats left at the table. So if you are interested, seven AM on Friday morning, um, please let us know, we'll make sure we get you a couple of seats.
Thank you. Where is he going to be? Mr. Benson, sir? Mr. Gaylor?
Nothing further, Mr. Murray.
Okay, uh, that'll do it now. You show up here next Monday or the Monday after, you'll be in this room by yourself. And if you show up on thirteen, uh, our meeting is from three to nine. So, uh, realize that the times are different. There being no further visits coming before this council, you are turned, you have a safe go and over.
Right?
Yes.
It's been fun.